Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening. We greatly appreciate it, of course, to the Cadillac Planning Commission here for October 28th, 2024. If I could please have everyone join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Roll call, please, Danielle.
Filkins.
Here.
Host.
Here.
Rice.
Here.
Bunz.
Here.
Blasher.
Here.
Baumann.
Here.
Fent.
Here.
Van Pelt.
Here.
Putman.
Here. Thank you.
Uh, tonight, need approval of our agenda again for October 28th, 2024.
So moved.
Putman.
Yes.
Blasher.
Yes.
Baumann.
Yes.
Van Pelt.
Yes.
Fent.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Filkins.
Yes.
Host.
Yes.
Bunz.
Yes.
Thank you. Next, I just need an approval of our last meeting of September 23rd, 2024 of the meeting minutes.
I'll make the permission.
Second.
Baumann.
Yes.
Fent.
Yes.
Bunz.
Yes.
Filkins.
Yes.
Van Pelt.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Blasher.
Yes.
Putman.
Yes.
Host.
Yes.
Okay, this evening, we have no public hearings. We have, um, three new business. Under new business, A, we have a property line adjustment request for 933 Platt Road, ID number 1-0-091-00-007-00, and 927 Platt Road, uh, whatever this number is for, ID of the lot, I guess. Having read that, I see Danielle did this. Yes?
Yeah. So before I get started, I just want to introduce Mrs. Keith Brown with Foster Swift, as well as Laura Jonovich is on Zoom, so.
Welcome both.
Thank you.
We're getting them into the circuit.
Yeah. All right. So yes, Habitat, Cadillac Area Habitat for Humanity set forth an application for 933 and 927 to adjust the property line. They recently purchased both of these lots. Um, they have since demolished both of the properties that were on, um, here and cleaned up the lot in hopes to build two new homes. The reason that this request is set before the Planning Commission tonight is due to the fact that it is located within the Smith &amp; Ernst addition of the plat. And these properties are zoned RMH. And for the minimum lot size, it's 6,000 square feet and a minimum lot width of 60. Currently, the way that 927 sits, um, it is non-conforming. It does not meet, um, the minimum requirements. This property line adjustment would bring 927 into compliance, with it being 75 feet in width and 140 in depth. And then 933 would also be that 75 and then 139 in depth. Pictured here, you can get an idea of what the properties would look like. Obviously, there is, the survey is included in your packet. The new property descriptions for the two parcels after the lot line adjustment would be as follows. Staff supports this adjustment due to the fact that both of the lots would meet the minimum requirements for size and width for the RMH zone district. And of course, those requirements can be found in the code ordinances. Recommendation tonight from staff would be to approve the requested lot split property line adjustment for properties 927 and 933 as presented in your packet tonight. If you guys do have any questions for Habitat, Jeff Geisman and Evan Stegar are here to answer any questions that the board may have.
I did notice on one of the sketches that one showed that it had a paved driveway. The other didn't show anything.
Right.
Observance, I don't know.
Yeah, so it was kind of, um, I guess if Evan, if you want to answer, but I can also answer myself too. It was more of like a shared, they're owned by the same, they were owned by the same person. It was kind of a shared driveway to both. Obviously, with the new construction, proper permits will be pulled for all of it. Evan, if you have extra to add, you're welcome to step up to the podium as well.
Yeah, it's just an old driveway that goes through.
You need to address me up there if you would, please.
Oh. So, oh, my name is Evan from Habitat for Humanity. And the driveway, um, is just like an old driveway that could, um, possibly be reused, but we wanted to make sure that her lot line was outside of that. Because whether or not we reuse the driveway, we're still going to need the curb cut. That was, that was about all I had to say about that.
Will the? With the split, will the driveway have to be rem, the survey's done already?
Not necessarily.
Will, will the driveway be entirely on one of the parcels?
Yes, yes, it would be on 33, 933.
Okay, okay, tight, okay. Sorry, I did not see the survey, so.
Any other questions for Evan? I think it's a good thing you're doing, Evan.
Are you going to put two houses there or just one? Okay, so inevitably you can have two houses there. Okay, cool.
Mr. Chair, making motion to approve the requested lot split slash property line adjustment for 927 and 933 Platt Road as presented by the Cadillac Area Habitat for Humanity.
One second.
Kevin, you second?
Either one of us, we're good.
Pick whoever you like, Danielle.
I put Kevin. Van Pelt?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Baumann?
Yes.
Filkins?
Yes.
Bunz?
Yes.
Host?
Yes.
Putman?
Yes.
Blasher?
Yes.
Fent?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have a land division request for East Garfield Street. Lot ID number 1-0-080-00-012-00. Danielle, please.
Yeah, so again, Cadillac Area Habitat for Humanity is requesting a land division on East Garfield Street. Pictured there is the parcel that the lot split was questioned. Again, this request is set before the Planning Commission due to the fact that it's located within a plat, the Miller's addition. This piece of property is zoned R2 with a minimum lot size requirement being 9,000 square feet and a minimum lot width of 75 feet. The requested land division would split the property nearly right down the middle with one lot being 107 feet in width by 156 and the second one being 103 by 156. Pictured there, you can get an idea of the split. Again, the survey is located in the packet. New descriptions there, as well as in your packet. Comments from staff. Staff supports this land division due to the fact that both of the lots will meet the minimum requirement set forth for the R2 zone district. Staff recommendation would be to approve this requested land division for East Garfield Street as presented. Have any questions for me?
I live up that area and I'm awed this parcel has sat there that long. So it's good to see something will take place there. Good. Anybody got any questions or problems with the split?
Is there anybody out here that wants to speak against it or for it? Oh, it's not a public hearing? Cool. Okay, good.
Make a motion to approve the requested land division for East Garfield as presented by the Cadillac Area Habitat for Humanity.
How about host? Blasher?
Yes.
Bunz?
Yes.
Fent?
Yes.
Putman?
Yes.
Van Pelt?
Yes.
Host?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Filkins?
Yes.
And Baumann?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. And lastly, council requested, um, to reconsider items related to the bed and breakfast proposed amendments. Having read that, I don't know if Laura or Keith, Laura?
Laura.
Sure.
Yes.
Yeah.
Welcome Laura.
Good evening. Yeah, good evening, Planning Commission members. Yes, I will give an introduction and then Keith, along with John and Danielle, will sort of facilitate the discussion tonight. By background, the Planning Commission previously, as you know, held a public hearing and recommended amendments to the zoning ordinance to both define bed and breakfast, which is different from a short-term rental. Define bed and breakfast and then allow it as a special land use in the RM1 and RM2 zoning districts. So city council with that recommendation basically had three options. It could adopt the amendments, it could reject and deny the amendments, or it could send the amendments back for further discussion by the Planning Commission. And so that last option is what, what council has done. And on the last page of your updated packet, it has the language of the motion that was unanimously approved by council with four items for discussion by the Planning Commission. So I think it makes sense to, you know, go through each of those and discuss them, see what Planning Commission's thoughts are. And then we can decide how that information gets transmitted up to the council. If there's some, if we want to just put it in the minutes or where we want to go with it. But that may be dependent on, on the Planning Commission's views. So the first, the first item, and I'm going to have John Wallace speak to this as well, was a request that the Planning Commission provide city council a summary and history of why a textual zoning change to two districts is required for accommodating the use of one house. And I guess before I turn it to John, one thing I would say is that when we do a text amendment versus a, you know, re-zoning or special land use, we're not looking just at a single property. So although one property's request did precipitate looking at allowing this land use explicitly in the zoning ordinance, that doesn't mean that the zoning ordinance amendment is written or intended to only benefit one property. So with that context, John, I don't know if you want to speak to sort of the, the, again, which I think was talked about a bit at the public hearing, but a bit more on how this, and how city staff came to propose these two districts?
Yes, you're correct. Although one house did generate the, um, the spark for bringing an amendment to the Planning Commission and the council. It's not the subject of these zoning amendments. What it did was it raised the issue that we did not have adequate wording in our zoning ordinance to address bed and breakfasts. They've been a use that have been pretty standardized in zoning throughout the state for, well, for my entire career. And in our zoning ordinance, it was not mentioned to be permitted in any district indirectly. It was allowed by virtue of being, um, connected to the word tourist home, which was allowed in the, I believe, the TS2 district. With, with the bed and breakfast, in my opinion, not being adequately addressed in, when the ordinance was written or in any recent amendments, it seemed like it was an appropriate time to address comprehensively where they should be addressed, much like we did with short-term rentals, although this is not a short-term rental. So when I looked at what other communities have done across the state, what we found, and this was included in your packet prior to the meeting for the public hearing, we found that it was pretty common for communities to allow bed and breakfasts not only in multifamily districts, but in single-family districts as well. And that might be by right, which means no special use permit was needed. Or it might be by special use permit, which you would allow you to take each case on a case-by-case basis. Given the options, I thought the best course of action in Cadillac was to allow them by special use permit in the more dense, densely used zoning districts of RM1 and RM2. And the RM1 and RM2 are multifamily districts, but they're also supposed to be transition zones between commercial zones and single-family residential zones. And so you have use, heavier uses that are allowed by special use, including more recently, when we took up the issue of the homeless shelters, shelters were, for instance, allowed by special use in the RM1 and RM2. So given the history of the intensity of this use and how other communities across the state are doing it and what I thought was reasonable for the city of Cadillac, I recommended that we do it by special use in the RM1 and RM2 because it's comparable to the other uses that are allowed to be considered in that district. And, um, I thought it was an appropriate opportunity for someone to introduce that use into the city. Historically, bed and breakfasts have not been problem uses for communities. It usually, well, it does require that the owner live on site. And so they have an obligation, more or less, if they want to stay in business, to keep control of the site and to make sure that the site is well-maintained and that they can continue to attract people to, to their use. So, um, I thought that was the most appropriate and conservative way to move forward on it. And that's, that's why it was done. It wasn't done for a particular lot. It was done taking into consideration all the different areas that we might consider one in the future, and that would be the RM1 and RM2.
So Mr. Chair, do you want to talk about that point? Or do you want us to go through all four before the Planning Commission discusses?
We can talk about each one. We can stay focused on the question, questions.
Okay.
So you want to go do them all or ask questions now?
Ask questions.
Ask questions now. It may run into, some of the bullets may cross over a little bit. In particular, at least for me, John, what other options? So I'm kind of rolling in with four. Is there a less, at least what I'm inferring from the questions here from city council is, is there a less dense, not dense, that's the wrong phrase, less onerous way to zone to permit this use? Either in RM1 alone or in RM2 alone or some other method?
Well, certainly, someone could, to limit it to one district or the other, with the uses being so, so much the same, I didn't see practical reason to do that, but certainly one could do that.
If I may, just throw on, and, and John, correct, correct me if I'm wrong. One of the ideas that you had commented during the city council meeting was an alternative approach. Instead of doing it by way of a special use permit where the Planning Commission maintains essentially control over reviewing this type of use on a case-by-case basis, another alternative would be that you just simply re-zone away from the RM1 zone into a tour, you know, what is it, a tourist?
TS2, tourist service 2.
Yeah, so it accomplishes something very differently. Now you're talking about a full rezoning of the entire area and then that use would be allowed by right versus allowed through a special use permitting process, which didn't accomplish the concept that staff was recommending, which is that the Planning Commission still maintain a certain level of control over these types of uses in terms of where they're located, which you maintain that control if, if that use is happening as a part of a special use permitting process. If, if you change the zoning of an area, then you're, to, to a zoning designation that would allow that use by right, then you're, you're giving up that ability. Another option that John, I believe you mentioned, or maybe it came about as a part of conversation, I think by one of our council members actually, was, well, what about an overlay? And establishing an overlay concept is certainly something that, that the Planning Commission and staff and whatnot can, can analyze. However, I can tell you that there would certainly be some levels of complexity to that. And, and so let me ramble for just another minute here. Let's just say that there's, you know, a handful of RM1 and RM2 zoned areas within the city of Cadillac. You would then need to have enough foresight to look geographically within those areas and essentially draw an overlay over very specific locations within those zones that would allow for this use to then basically just happen if it's within that overlaid area. Otherwise, otherwise, you know, you, you would not be able to allow that use to happen. And I guess what becomes complex is, you know, you're, you're trying to guess, in a sense, where within those zones that area should, should occur or should not occur. Versus, again, the recommendation initially was, if, if this is something we want to be in the business of allowing, perhaps the most controlled way of doing it is through a special use permitting process. And John, I, if I misspoke or Laura or Keith, please, somebody jump in. I, I'm not trying to pretend to be the community development director just going off of what my takeaway was from the, the discussion. And John certainly clarify anything.
Well, with respect to the rezoning, um, you could consider rezoning to TS2. Someone might challenge that as spot zoning, although spot zoning is sometimes very difficult to determine. We do have some relatively small parcels in the city that stand alone as TS2 zoning districts. I, I don't know if, you know, we've never had to defend that as to whether that's spot zoning or not. It doesn't necessarily have to be. But the other thing to keep in mind if you rezone, not only are you allowing the potential use for a bed and breakfast, but you're also allowing potential use for all the uses permitted by right and all the other uses permitted by special use in the TS2 district. And so you could be introducing a whole host of different uses into a zone where those traditionally have not been. So that, that's something to keep in mind if, if you were going to choose the rezoning route.
Clarification question. Difference between RM1, RM2? Just geographic locations or are there different parameters that define one and two?
They're largely similar. RM2 just allows a little bit more flexibility in the intensity of use over the RM1. I don't have the ordinance in front of me, but we could probably call up the list of uses permitted and, and read those off. But, uh, yeah, it's a, just a slight difference in, in intensity or density of uses between the two districts. But they're both considered primarily for multifamily residential.
I will chime in on the, on the overlay. If the Planning Commission wanted to narrow the location and effectively draw a map over the existing zoning map and say, you know, within RM or R2 or wherever else, you know, this is where we're going to draw a map of where this use would be allowed. Obviously, that would require another public hearing and likely then, would require then mailed notice to those properties and those within 300 feet, because you are creating a new district then, whereas here we were just doing a text amendment. So that's just kind of a little, a bit more procedural information on what that might look like. Which might address item three in terms of feedback from people near those areas.
RM2 does allow mobile home parks, for instance, which is a huge difference. The special land uses for RM1 are recreational activities, offices and/or business in an existing building, office and/or business in a dwelling, if it's a family shelter, a group shelter, or a combination group family shelter. So you can see that there's a variety of uses that are allowed by special use permit already in the RM1. And then when you go into the RM2, of course, it adds mobile home parks, which is a, a huge change, which is really kind of surprising because I think we also have a mobile home district that we could rezone into. So there's probably really, really a need to update the zoning ordinance with respect to some of these uses.
Any other discussion here on the first topic? Move to the second. Laura, may we move to number two, please?
Sure. Number two, in number two, the council asked that the Planning Commission provide a summary of all potential options available to accommodate this request and why these changes to two zoning districts are needed to accomplish it. I think there is some overlap with number one here in the discussion that we just had. First, that really it's not necessarily just about this one property, as John explained. But even, you know, with respect to that, some of the other options for that property would be rezoning or another option for the Planning Commission. If the Planning Commission wanted to change its recommendation, could be an overlay district. I'm not suggesting that the Planning Commission is by this motion required to change its recommendation, but since the question asks for other options, that would be one.
You know, the overall thing to think about in zoning, though, is it's almost always, not completely, but 95% of zoning is done by zoning district, meaning uses by right and uses by special use permit. So by their very nature, the, what can happen in those zoning districts is set up by district. And if you start moving away from that, then the, the basis of how you treat those given areas changes to something else. And it's, it's the way the entire ordinance is based right now. If you go to any zoning ordinance in the state and you look up under residential or any residential district or any commercial district, usually they'll have tables in the beginning. And they'll have, whether, it'll have a whole laundry list of uses and it'll tell you whether they're permitted by right or by special use permit by district. And so by its very nature, dis, by district is the way that you deal with land uses in the zoning ordinance. You know, there, there are some other options, but they are not, they are not typical or common. And the other thing with overlay too, if you're going to start looking custom-wise, you might even want to consider other zoning districts to put the overlay o-over. And that, that makes the matter all the more complex. A lot of communities like having bed and breakfasts in their historical district because they have some larger homes with larger lots and they're particularly well-suited to a B&amp;B business. But we purposely chose not to, to take that route.
Any questions or comments for John or Laura? Number three. Laura, may we move to number three, please?
Certainly. Number three reads, "Provide input from direct feedback gathered by city staff from residents and property owners in these districts across the city and explore the need to do it all across the RM and R2 districts or just the area of this particular property." So with a text amendment, like the one that the Planning Commission has recommended up, because it is generally applicable to all properties in those districts, and again, is not specific to one property, it's not the type of amendment where notice of the public hearing is mailed, although of course, public hearing notice is still posted on the city's website and at City Hall. So I think, and, and I wasn't present at the council meeting, but others there were. There's a concern about making sure there's kind of buy-in or support from people in the zoning. from people in the zoning districts to have this as a land use that is permitted there. Um, and I take number three to mean, um, and, and Mayor Philkins or someone else can correct me if I'm wrong, um, a discussion by the Planning Commission on what kind of public input should be solicited. Um, although, you know, if the Planning Commission wants to go in a different direction, then that question might answer itself. Um, you know, in terms of a rezoning or overlay, then different notice would be required anyway. Um, again, legally, there's no requirement for the text amendment that was proposed to be mailed to any individuals, um, because it is a generally applicable amendment. Um, but there's, you know, some concern expressed about having a sense of what people in RM and R, R, RM1 and RM2 think about bed and breakfasts.
Oh, real quick, Laura, if we, um, if a special use permit request ever came in, it would require notice to those affected households, correct?
Yes, i- it would, and that's a, a good point that I meant to make as well, so thank you for asking that. No, uh, the adoption of the text amendment would not allow any bed and breakfast. It would, they would still have to go through the special land use process, which would require a public hearing for which notice would be mailed to the properties within 300 feet.
Thank you. And lastly, number four, please, Laura?
Number four requests a summary from staff on specific enforcement rules and provisions for this property, how these rules will be adopted, special use permit, who is responsible to enforce any future non-compliance, and the specific penalties for non-compliance. So again, looking at the text amendment as a whole, again, it's not specific to one property. This would be allowed as a special use permit. So if there is a, well, first I'll say, the rules, um, would be set forth in that special use permit. Um, what is allowed, any limitations on hours or, um, other potential nuisance factors, um, would be conditions of approval of that special use permit. And if those conditions are not satisfied, if they are violated, then you, the Planning Commission, has the authority to provide notice and a hearing and revoke that special use permit, which, as you know, we did not, uh, not too long ago on the outdoor storage, um, property where special use requirements were not being satisfied, so there was a revocation. So it's different than the short-term rental enforcement situation we've been dealing with where they're just not allowed. So it's been, um, kind of chasing down, um, those who are in violation and seeking judicial relief. Um, here, there would be a mechanism in place to revoke that special use permit. Um, now, if somebody's special use permit was revoked and they, you know, thwarted the city and continued it anyway, um, then we certainly would have the right to take them to court and would have a pretty, you know, open and shut case for getting an injunction.
And Laura's correct, you, the Planning Commission can set all those standards as part of the special use process. If you felt more comfortable and you knew that there were certain standards that you wanted to apply to any bed and breakfast, um, relative to whatever it might be, number of rooms rented or, or, uh, you know, uh, noise levels or anything like that, you could choose to put some special use standards in the ordinance or you could choose just to customize those standards, uh, when you do the, uh, actual approval. So there would be two options there.
I agree.
So John, if, if there were, um, the guidelines in place, just like you said, here's, here's the standard requirements for operating a bed and breakfast by special use permit, and those weren't being met, then whose responsibility does it become to start that process, to bring it back, uh, for revoking of the special use permit? Where does that fall?
The zoning department, which would be community development. And then legal, of course, would be assisting with the proper correspondence.
And, and if it violated conditions of the special use permit, like Laura explained before, it could be brought back to the Planning Commission for the revocation of the, uh, special use permit.
Yeah, but I think it's important, if I may add, um, like, just, just in very generic terms, you know, the, the zoning code in its entirety is enforced by the Community Development Department.
Okay.
That, they are the, the primary folks on a day-to-day basis that are responsible for the zoning code. They're not out there on their own, though. They work hand-in-hand with other staff, they work hand-in-hand with legal. And in this example, as we're talking about tonight, with regard to a, you know, potential special use permitting process, um, they would also be working with, um, the Planning Commission, uh, to take official action if, if it ever warranted or got that far. So, uh, but the initiation of, of any enforcement action, in a, in a sense, regarding any provision within the zoning code, if you're, if you're trying to identify where within the operations of the city that work would start or, or, or be on whose desk, it would be the Development Department.
So if we go back to Joe's question about, you know, I think that the council in general felt like it was too overarching. It got too big for this single request. So to make it less onerous, you know, how do we get from here to where we need to be? Um, so that it's not affecting, well, let's say RM1 and RM2. You know, if it's in RM1, do we just leave it in RM1? Or is there a way to make it even smaller within that special use permit or zoning?
Well, the easiest thing to do would be to restrict it to fewer, a fewer districts. If you go beyond that, it gets a little bit more challenging, and I'm not quite sure what the answer is to that. And I'm not sure that, you know, when you look at how it's viewed by most communities, that it's that offensive a use to say we only need one of them in the community.
Well, and it, you know, it's helping people understand too. I mean, you used the terms, um, spot zoning, right? I remember there was a time, and I don't remember at this very moment exactly what it was, but there was a concern about spot zoning. And so then we moved to this more, this, this sort of reaction to a special request. So, you know, how do we get to the right place?
Well, that, you know, that's, that's what essentially your mission is to, tonight. You have to look at the use and decide whether it's, should be something that's extremely limited. Uh, and the best way to do that is to go with one zoning district. You know, of course, you got to keep in mind too, that, that you could open it up to every zoning district and the Planning Commission might only choose to approve 3% of all requests to do it. So, um, there's that too. I mean, the Planning Commission is really the, kind of the gatekeeper in terms of how much is permitted. But if you're going to pick one district, should it be RM1 or RM2? When both districts primarily have the same uses, you know, 80, 90% of the same uses in, in those two districts, why would you pick one versus the other? I, you know?
I, I, I think part of, I think part of the conversation that City Council was struggling with, um, to a certain degree, was the overlap in consciousness about the establishment of the amendment to the code that would then put the Planning Commission in business to be able to review and consider an application for a special use permit, while at the same time also having in front of you the gentleman that owns property within one of those districts that's out there talking about, we've had conversation at this level as well, about a potential property that, that could be used in this way. And I think there was some overlap in, in discussion and conversation here and there about, well, if we approve something tonight, are we now all of a sudden approving it everywhere? Are we approving it, you know, for this property? And, and we, you know, tried to, to pull back a little bit that, that discussion where we could. Um, having the discussion again with Planning Commission tonight, I think, helps in that way where we can really reiterate that if, if this is a use that the city wants to be in the, in the business of considering at all, perhaps the most restrictive way of doing it is by special use because it's only considered on a case-by-case basis. So, you know, you can approve one and deny another. That's the nature of, of what this is. And so, you know, in, in terms of whether you allow it only in the RM1 or only in the RM2 or vice versa, or you allow it in both, or you allow it in any district, it's still very restrictive if it's only being allowed by special use. So I, trying to help with, with just getting over that.
There is no precedent setting. Um, when you look at the special land use request, you look at an individual property. You look at how that building was designed, uh, how its rooms are oriented, uh, what kind of parking arrangement it has. So just because you approve one, you could take another home that's similar size, but for a variety of reasons, um, doesn't nearly fit how nicely it would work in approving a permit somewhere else. So, uh, you do have that option despite having approved one. You could easily reject another one based on sound reason, uh, of different things that are happening, uh, on that, on that property or in the surrounding properties.
Or put certain conditions on the approval, similar to what Planning Commission has done in other special use permitting situations on, on different matters over the, you know, in the past, where you approve it under a special use permitting process, subject to certain conditions, which is something that you can do here too. So, but, uh, you know, staff is not trying to lead you in one direction or another. We're just trying to provide you with the best information that we have. It was remanded back by City Council, taking another look, are there other options? You know, I briefly mentioned a couple of other ones. There's a list that you have that you're going through. But, you know, you may not come to any different conclusion, and that's okay too.
John, in your, uh, research of, you know, looking across the state, other communities, are there, um, are there standards out there that are readily, readily available for, um, you know, guidelines and, and, uh, requirements for a bed and breakfast within a residential?
It would be.
Readily available?
It would be somewhat easy to generate a list of kind of core standards that other communities are using.
The commission wants, the city commission wants the summary and history. It wants a summary, and it wants a summary. So I'm not sure how we're going to convey those summaries and histories. Perhaps just by conveying the video of this meeting?
Well, I think planning, yeah, I think the Planning Commission should, should discuss, um, have a discussion. And although I agree the charge is only to answer these questions or, um, provide these summaries, it's, it's of course an opportunity for the Planning Commission to sort of reach a consensus on whether it wants to, um, you know, stick with the recommendation that it's made, which it has the right to do, or, um, ultimately propose something different.
Well, I will tell you that, you know, when these concerns were brought up at the council meeting, you know, I did, I did share with the council that the Pla- Planning Commission did do its job. You know, we, we had it brought before us, we set the public hearing, we heard, we heard. We heard what people had to say, um, and we had some very thoughtful discussion. And I felt like what we brought forward was solid. Um, but if, you know, anybody else is feeling like there should be something different, I'm, I'm open to suggestions, um, but I thought that what we took for, forward was, was pretty solid. You know, it's just helping people understand that this Planning Commission still has the oversight, still has that control to decide what goes where in the, the city. And every time there's going to be a special use permit, whether it be an RM1 or RM2 or wherever it is, it has to come before this Planning Commission. And we're going to set, step through the very same process to make sure that all the questions are answered.
And the power to revoke.
And the power to revoke, yeah. Which this Planning Commission has shown it's not afraid to do if they are not following the rules that were set forth when that permit was given to them.
So how do we make council happy with what we have in front of us?
I guess I would make a motion that the Planning Commission affirm its previous recommendation, but that staff and/or staff council provide the summaries as requested and even if it's just a summary of our discussion this evening, because I think it meets the bullets and the requests from the council itself.
Support. Philkins?
Yes.
Host?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Bunts?
Yes.
Fosher?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Bent?
No.
Putvin?
Yes.
Ben Pelt?
Yes.
Thank you, Danielle. Thank you, Laura.
Yep, thanks, we'll work with staff to put that together.
Thank you so much.
Laura, can I ask one question?
Of course.
Is this something that will be put together and then brought to Planning Commission for approval prior to going to council? Or you guys are just good with what's drafted, sent out, and then sent to council?
We're good.
Good?
Yeah, what's the, what's the Planning Commission's wish on that?
Whatever you write's perfect.
Okay.
Laura's law, her lawyers love to hear that.
I mean, we certainly can send it out, just like as an FYI, so you don't just see it in the council packet, but just wanted to make sure that there wasn't any approval wanted before it goes out.
Perfect, thank you.
Thanks, Laura.
Old business, we have nothing. Board member comments? Comment without, but in case I'm wrong. Uh, communications, staff, nothing?
No.
Perfect. Public comments, I have public. Public comments. Anybody would like to come forward, please state your name?
Martin Dubravik, Chapin Street. I, I have a question. If the, um, i- if the person who wanted to do this like right now, couldn't he come to the Planning Commission and ask for a special use permit? And if not, why not?
Because nothing's in place. It doesn't exist.
So i- so as far as the boarding house, they came to the Planning Commission requesting that. Is there a boarding house provision in the RM1?
Yes, there was.
RM2?
And we were able to move on it, and we listened, and it didn't go forward. Yes, sir.
Okay. And then, uh, has, has anybody in, in the city staff, is Mr. Wallace or anybody contacted the neighbors around, um, around the property?
Doubt it because they're short of people, but I'm at, um, I'm, it's not for me to answer, so.
Well, it, it really hasn't been a standard practice in the city for the last 20 years. So the answer is, no.
Okay, so I have one comment on that. It should be, really should be standard practice. A phone call just takes a few minutes and might really ease. And, and if I remember right, the, I, I, I think Mr. Ulrich did have letters of support from people around, did, did, was that transmitted to city staff?
He just brought it to.
It, it just was forwarded the night of the meeting to the Planning Commission members. It wasn't submitted to staff.
S- so that, when was that, at the last Planning Commission meeting regarding this?
Yes.
So that wasn't brought up?
It was at the last council meeting.
Okay, it wasn't at, okay.
Council meeting.
Right.
Because Councilmember King wanted to know, he, he, he was grateful that
Right.
Andy Ulrich had taken the time to do that and to provide that information.
Okay, so that wasn't at the last Planning Commission?
It was at the council meeting.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Marcus.
Just wanted to remind the planning commission that should, should this ever get approved by city council, and there ever is an actual application for a special use permit, direct mail will go to properties within 300 feet of whatever that subject property is, telling them, here's what's happening, here's what this means, here's where the meeting's going to be, here's when the meeting's going to be, so that that communication, that direct communication does happen. That might result in phone calls and other ways of people talking, but that's how we notify everybody, very equally, very much on the same balanced level, so.
Before a special use permit was voted out.
Yep, yeah, because that permit gets granted by your body after a public hearing.
Right. And staff does communicate with people that contact the city as a result of the public notices. If they want to find out what's going on or want to discuss the nature of the project, we do engage in conversations at that point.
Any other public comment this evening?
Go ahead, Steve. You want to go?
You'll probably say what I'm going to say. Steve Bivarski, I guess my, my comment would be, since the bed and breakfast is more likely to be multi, I mean, you probably can serve a couple guests at the same time. I don't know how many, how many rooms or how many people can rent at the same time. But to me, it seems like it's going to be higher density, which would be more like the RM2, and therefore, it would be more conservative to experiment with something that fit closer. Just start it with RM2, and then later on, down the road, if that's working all right, then maybe expand it to both. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Do I have to sign in?
Only if you want to, but we know who you are.
I don't want to. Yeah, all right, so.
Make sure for the record, though.
I, you know, I guess I'm confused about the difference between a short-term rental and a bed and breakfast. My thinking is that not all short-term rentals are bed and breakfasts, but all bed and breakfasts are short-term rentals. So, I was sitting there thinking, geez, what are the similarities and what are the differences? So, the similarities are, you know, it's 30 days or less, but they're going, it's 15 days or less. That's a similarity. And then other similarities is they'll be able to advertise on Airbnb and VRBO and evolve on any other sites like that. They both eat up long-term housing for residents, and they both eat up motel use for Cadillac, like Cadillac Resort, and they close in the winter because they don't have housing for them, or it's big people using it. And there's still a lot of unknown people in residential areas. And they can be owner-occupied. Let's see, the, I think that was one of the big differences, that this is owner-occupied, but there are other short-term rentals that were in town that were also owner-occupied. So, that's not really a difference, that's a similarity. And it's not zoned, but this isn't zoned for it either, right? Unless, unless the city council says, okay, then it, right now, it's not a permitted use in RM1 or RM2. And then, it, but is it, would a bed and breakfast be approved in a TS1, TS2, B1 or B2 area, like a short-term rental?
It wouldn't extend to that. It is allowed, I believe, in the TS2. I'd have to confirm that, but that's only because of its linkage to the word tourist home.
So, that would be a similarity. It would still be allowed in the zone. And then, I was going to say they're not next or in view of anybody on the planning board or the city council, but there is one over by Host. She can look right out and see it. And then, these all have been pushed through, right? There's not one of these short-term rentals that was not approved or recommended by the planning board, even though they weren't in the zoned area. So, Pine Street was approved by you guys. Yes, yeah, and the city council rejected that.
Oh, yeah.
And so, the one on Sunnyside was also approved, and that one was approved by the city council. That's where it is. It's out there right by Peggy's house there. So, every request has been approved by you guys. So, that's a similarity, too. And then, the differences are that it's owner-occupied, but that's not really true, because I know of at least one that was owner-occupied. And you talk about the spot zoning, like the 2713 Sunnyside, that was by special use permit, I believe. And so, that was an R2 zone district. So, how did that happen? And it's not a short term anymore. So, the only other difference, I think, is that they get a breakfast there. So, my question was, since you have a special use permit for the one on Sunnyside, and they're not using it as a short-term rental, would that be revoked? That's all I've got.
I've got one. Thank you. Thanks, Amy. All right. Lady Steve, yes, sir.
My name's Doug Moore.
Hi, Doug.
I live over on North Boulevard. And I'd like a show of hands, if you don't mind, of any of you, I think Peggy, you have a short-term rental by you. Do any others, planning members have one by it? Didn't think so. Joe, I noticed you were wanting to just sweep this thing under the rug and just get it over to the council, just whatever. And I don't know if you remember me, I was down on my hands and knees begging you not to open up this can of worms on this. Right now, the city of Cadillac has one person that I met, great guy. I met him after the last planning meeting, and I said, why in heaven's name didn't you put a clause in your purchase agreement to check on this, to see if you could do it before you invested all this money into it? And he said, you know, I really am thinking about pulling it. I don't know if he's still got the permit in for it or not, but he said, I didn't mean to open this can of worms. And Cadillac is blessed with another lake that connects to us outside of the city limits. And people can go over and they can rent short-term rentals over there. It's not like we don't accommodate short-term rentals in this area. But it just amazes me that you guys want to keep opening this up. I mean, you've done, the city has done a horrible job trying to reel in these short-term rentals. And from the outside looking in, if you've got a short-term rental here and you've got a bed and breakfast, and I have one right next door to me, you've still got people coming and going that you don't know. And I don't like that. I would much rather have a annual renter that I get to know from a, from, in a neighbor's standpoint, than people that are just coming and going, you never get to really know them because they're there for a long weekend or a week. And it's, it's like I listen to you, John, and you're trying to say, well, we're not really sure about this, or we're not, you know, it'd be up to the planning board to decide all this. And here's a great idea. You only have one person right now that has requested this. Why not just say no? We're not going to do it at this time. And give you guys time to do your homework and study up on what the city really wants to do, have a five-year plan down the road. If you get, guys decide you want to do it, maybe we'll do it in this zone. And not, well, we could do it here, but if we do this, or we, you guys are so undecided on this, and it just, I hate to see you say, yeah, let's go ahead and do this, because other communities have it, and we should have it. Well, we do have it. We've got it right over on Lake Mitchell. We, we've got, how many, I mean, the state park and the campgrounds, I mean, people come up here, we've got the hotels, like Andy said, that one of them closed down last winter. I mean, they're dying for the business. So, do we really need a bed and breakfast in Cadillac? That's my question to you guys, right now at this time. I say do your homework. Get your ducks in a row. Talk with the council. You guys need to get together and say, you know, this is a good idea, but what do you guys think of this? It's like you guys are just trying to, dude, like Joe, just whatever you write, whatever you write, Danielle, we'll approve. And I just hate to see it, like, try to get shoved through because somebody, some of the other communities have it. And I don't think at this time Cadillac needs it. Thank you.
Yeah, so everyone has time enough to speak. Try and keep it to three minutes is all.
Sure. My name's Tony.
So, others' folks can just speak.
Right.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yep. My name's Tony Tonello. My actual first name is Amel Tonello, if it makes a difference in legal. But my question was, we, they talked about the requirements that a B&amp;B would have to, would have to keep a list, that they would have to follow these requirements. Has that list been drawn up? Do we know what that list would be? Wondering how we could approve to have B&amp;Bs if we don't know what we're going to allow them to, or expect them to adhere to.
Yes, that will come up at the public hearing, sir. Yes.
So, it is, there is such a list?
It isn't in place yet, because it doesn't exist yet. But yes.
Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Pat Ponzek. I live in Cadillac, have for a long time. I don't think that a short-term rental or a bed and breakfast is really a home. Maybe a bed and breakfast is because somebody's supposed to live there. So, they're not really homes, so, not long-term homes for people. They are businesses, whether it would be a bed and breakfast, or whether it's a short-term rental, or it's a boarding house, or a tourist home, it's a business. It's not a home. It's not a place where your neighbors live. It's just a business.
Thank you, Pat.
Should be treated like one.
Any other public comments this evening? There being none, we have no other business, and we're adjourned. Thank you.
Have a good night, everyone.